Oh gosh. I have one.
Yeah. It was at my call Saturday back too, so.
It's not even six o'clock.
I know.
Just hope you're doing that.
He just wants to pick on the seventeen.
Smack the gavel.
You're gonna find out a lot about me now.
All right, everybody. I am gonna call the DeKalb City Council regular meeting of May ninth to order. Recording Secretary Scott?
Order please, or roll call please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight present.
Awesome. And now we've got the Pledge of Allegiance. Tammy, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Wonderful.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Always a good way to start. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, presentations. I have four proclamations I'm gonna read, so sit back, strap in, and here we go, people. All right. First, it's regarding Motorcycle Awareness Month for May 2022. Whereas safety is the highest priority for highways and streets of our city and state, and whereas the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, and whereas motorcycles are a primary, common, and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion, and whereas it is especially meaningful that the citizens of our city and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the members of Abate of Illinois Incorporated, a brotherhood aimed towards education, continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school drivers' education programs and to the general public in our city and state, presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over 120,000 participants in Illinois over the past seven years, and whereas all motorcyclists should join Abate of Illinois Incorporated in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, awareness, and respect of the citizens of our city and state, and whereas the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national and community charitable organizations, and whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways within the city of DeKalb and throughout the great state of Illinois. Therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb in the great state of Illinois, in recognition of 35 years of Abate of Illinois Incorporated and over 352,318 registered motorcyclists statewide, and in recognition of the continued role Illinois serves as a leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, do hereby claim the month of May 2022 as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the city of DeKalb and urge all motorists to join in an effort to improve safety and awareness on our roadways. All right. I think they always say, "Look twice," so please definitely look twice. All right. Another proclamation for International Firefighters Day, May 4, 2022. Whereas International Firefighters Day was established in 1999 to remember those firefighters worldwide lost in the line of duty protecting the safety of us all, and whereas the role of a firefighter in today's society, be it urban, rural, natural environment, volunteer, career, industrial, defense force, aviation, motorsport, or other, is one of dedication, commitment, and sacrifice, no matter what country they reside in and work in, and whereas International Firefighters Day recognizes those firefighters who have served their communities for most of their lives and for those who served for just a few short years. They set themselves apart as model citizens, setting a fine example in their communities with their willingness and dedication, and whereas hailing from all walks of life, they are our mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, grandparents, neighbors, and friends. They protect us without wanting or of recognition or reward. In our time of need, they are there with courage, compassion, and loyalty. They are the essence of the true meaning of community. Therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby encourage all citizens to recognize not only our local firefighters but those worldwide, not only on May 4th but year-round, for their courage, selfless service, and sacrifice. All right. Now, we have National Emergency Medical Services Week, May 15 through the 21st, 2022. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of DeKalb. We also have a proclamation for National Police Week. National Police Week, May 15, 2021, May 15 through 21st, 2022. There we go. All right. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of DeKalb play an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens of our community, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation, and whereas our police department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, as Mayor of the City of DeKalb, urge our citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to our communities have established for themselves the rights and security of all citizens. Now, therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as National Police Week in the city of DeKalb. All right. Those are all awesome. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item E, public participation. I have a speaker request form from former Mayor Jerry Smith. Mayor Smith, would you like to come up and speak? And just as a reminder, Mayor, you have three minutes to address the council.
Yes, sir. It was exactly one year ago tonight wherein I handed over the gavel to Mayor Barnes. And I've had a number of folks over the last year say to me, "How are you doing? And what do you think that council is doing? How are they doing?" If you recall, Mayor Barnes, shortly after that evening, I said to you, and I said to City Manager Nicholas, that I was gonna take a step back, I was gonna try to stay in the background. I will continue to do that over the next few years. I've only been to City Hall once. Today, at the Hillcrest event, was only the second time that I had seen Ruth Scott. I really sort of stayed out of city matters, but believe me, I watch you on TV. I watch you on Channel 14. As a matter of fact, I may leave after my comments tonight and watch the rest on TV. So what do I think of the city council? Mayor, you have a great team here.
No doubt.
Ward one. Carolyn, we've had our ups and downs during my tenure. If you recall, when I endorsed Cohen Barnes for mayor in the election, I said, "We can have the best of both worlds. We can elect Cohen Barnes as our mayor, keep Carolyn Morris in Ward one, where you've done a wonderful job." Your compassion continues. Thank you very much, and you have to be awfully proud of the pathway of what happened today at Hillcrest. So keep up the good work. Ward two, you are my alderman, Alderman Larson. You know what? I've been impressed. You asked questions during the campaign, and now, as an alderman, you continue to ask questions. I'm aware that you've visited a lot of the departments. Thank you. Thank you for learning, thank you for listening, and thanks for those questions, and thank you for being my alderman. Tracy Smith, Alderman three. Your background as not only a policeman but as a member of the Smith family, longtime residents in the city of DeKalb, you bring so much to this table as a city councilman. I'm so happy that you're finally getting to see some of the nuts and bolts and shovels in the ground, if you will, in Ward three. Thank you very, very much. You know, I've made a few appointments that have been questionable over my four years, but I made a lot of good ones, I feel. One of those appointments was I brought Greg Perkins' name when Pat Fagan had to resign city council as our fourth ward alderman. Greg, you've done a magnificent job, and I'll tell you what I like about you again. You ask questions of staff and your knowledge of dollars and cents. Your fiscal strength brings so much to the city council. Scott McAdams, wow. We didn't see eye to eye from the get-go. We still don't see eye to eye politically on a lot of things today, but I am so proud of you and how you've come along and become a part of this collaborative effort that is city council. So thank you, thank you very much. Ward six, what a good friend you've been, Mike Verbic. I really appreciate your friendship. You know, you've been one of those city councilmen who thinks out of the box. Sometimes what you brought, I couldn't figure out what in the heck you were talking about. But I tell you, your background in education on the school board, your interest in things like truancy, and your ability to let your ward know what it is that you're doing and what this city council is doing is so much appreciated by them. And then we have the patriarch of the city council, Tony Favor. Tony, your background and your family name, of course, goes back so many, many years. What you've done as the leader of this council, I think, and as the patriarch, is really appreciated. You bring a sense, a common sense approach to so many things. It's visible for those of us who watch the DeKalb City Council. And you know, your interest in the airport, your interest in the environment, really, really appreciated. So, and this council, I'm so impressed, the fact that you're working with Bill Nicholas and this magnificent team of staff that he's put together. Bill, you are such a great city manager, and it's great to work, I hope you feel, with these men and women of the DeKalb City Council. I said to you in closing, Mayor, a year ago, I said, "Let the momentum continue," because whether we were building or planning to tear things down, we knew that there was great momentum. Is there evidence of this momentum? You better believe it, and I, as one citizens of the city of DeKalb, thank you very much. So let that momentum continue. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your four years and setting the stage for so much of what has been happening over the last year. It just shows, we need a lot of good people up here, doing their best, making the best decisions they possibly can. They're not all perfect, and they're not all right all the time, but I know the council that I'm surrounded by are a bunch of considerate, concerned citizens of DeKalb, trying to do the best job that they possibly can with the information they can. And your "let the momentum continue," I would thank and hope that you are happy with the momentum that I feel has definitely continued within this community. So thanks, Mayor Smith. All right. And you are more than welcome to go home and watch us on TV for the rest of the meeting. Wouldn't blame you a bit. You've been here plenty of times. All right. Moving on to appointments, Agenda Item F, we have none. Moving on to Agenda Item G, approval of the minutes. Minutes submitted by the recording secretary. Minutes of the regular city council meeting as of April 25, 2022. I would take a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right. The minutes have been approved. Moving on to the consent agenda. Number one, accounts payable and payroll through May 9, 2022 in the amount of $2,191,580.44. Number two, joint review board minutes, meeting minutes as of January 28, 2022. And number three, FY 2022 Human Services Funding First Quarter Report. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right. The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to Agenda Item I, public hearings. We have none. And now Agenda Item J, considerations. Number one, consideration of a proposed intergovernmental agreement between the DeKalb Community Unit School District #428 and the city of DeKalb. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. There are just a few items on the agenda tonight, and this is, I think, by far the most important because it concerns two of the essential institutions in our community and also because it will impact a greater share of the youth in our community in some form or other. So how did we get to a proposed intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, between our city government and the Community Unit School District #428? This is a question that's been discussed at the school board level for a number of weeks now. This is your first opportunity to have that conversation, and I look forward to it. I've given you some detailed background, not only on the actual agreement that's proposed, but what caught the attention of the staffs of the city and the school district, and probably as much as anything, the spike in this last school year, the current school year, which began in August and continues. But the numbers that I portrayed for you on page two of your background only go to March 1st, but it's clear that the calls for service of our school resource officers, or SROs, get into some acronyms here, have spiked, and in terms of our comps in northern Illinois exceed in a substantial way the closest number of calls for service in the other districts. So the focus of our staffs have been on safety, but none of the participants, as I went out of the way to underscore in the background, none of our participating members, especially the members of our police department, believe that the mutual respect and accountability that are necessary to inspire more positive relationships in the schools and elsewhere in our community can be found alone in crisis intervention of some form or another. We strongly believe that there are, there is common ground between restorative practices and accountability, maybe of a more traditional nature. These are not mutually exclusive concepts. Our police officers certainly would much rather be life coaches than arbiters of obedience. So here's where we are. I was not able to attend the last school board meeting because I was suffering from the same ailment I have tonight. What's two weeks? But I am in a position tonight to say that on the basis of the school board's direction, and Tammy's in the audience tonight to help with this explanation if she desires, the school board voted clearly to enter into the agreement as described in your background for the purpose of hiring two additional SROs, which would bring the SRO total to five. The agreement before you tonight is for six. Obviously, there's, in Congress, it would be a reconciliation. There would have to be some effort, or else we don't have an agreement, to settle together on the number of SROs and any other changes that you might think are appropriate to the agreement. I'm not gonna go into great detail. The agreement does look forward to a couple of things, not just naming the number of SROs that would be available. It also has an expectation of a revised district code of conduct, a code of conduct that would attend the behavior of anyone who works in or attends school in or teaches in our school district. Excuse me. That code of conduct is in draft form. The school board has not approved it as yet, and so it was not brought forward as part of this IGA draft that's before you tonight. And another thing I should mention, and I think it was mentioned at the school board meeting last week, that the board had hired a school safety audit, a third party to come in. I don't believe that that has been published yet, and so once it's published, it would have to be reviewed by the board first and then ultimately would come your way, but I believe it is fair to say that the audit thought, I think the audit recommended three school resource officers, so there's three different opinions out there on that at this The understanding that we have at our city staff level is that the IGA does not go forward without that proposed code of conduct, whatever the number of SROs may be, and that becomes a living document that's annually revised or as needed, that we're in the, included in the process of discussing the implications of it and its details. On the other hand, it's also understood, as we've done ever since the first SRO was selected, we include representatives of the school staff along with us in vetting the selection of the SROs, and we feel that's fair and an appropriate way to proceed. So I'm gonna stop there. I'll be happy to answer questions. Chief is in the audience, Chief Bird, and you likewise will be happy to answer any questions.
And real quick, as Bill mentioned, I was at the last school board meeting with Chief Bird. The majority of the board voted for minimum two, potentially three SROs, was what I heard, correct, Tammy? And part of that, I think, was they wanted to wait till the security audit was finished because they're gonna have a litany of possible things to implement to address the overall solution, and they wanted a little freedom to know that maybe they would go another direction for what would have been an equivalent, that third SRO potentially, part financial, part guidance from the third-party security audit that's happening. But what I heard, a majority of them could see having three SROs. They just wanted to make sure, two for sure, with the possible option of a third, just to get a little flexibility as these, whether it's the student code of conduct and the security audit, become finalized, and they can actually have a look at that and be able to deliberate on that. So it wasn't a no, it wasn't a disregard, we're just going with two. It was two definitely, potentially do a third. Would that be accurate, Tammy? Okay. So council questions?
And maybe, maybe you can answer this. So were there metrics, you know, because it was like that we'll review this, you know, to see how it's working? Are there metrics going in of what, is it like, how many calls or, you know, you'd almost have to have something, how are you going to determine if this was working, if we're almost don't need it anymore, if it changed? So were those discussed?
So I'll actually ask Tammy Carson if you want to come up to the microphone. So Tammy was actually directly a part of the security audit that they went through, and is with the school district, and probably could elaborate some more on that.
Thank you. There isn't anything set at this point for specific metrics. We have a lot of work to do with the security audit once it comes out because it is so many different factors across the district from all grade levels. So there's nothing specific in place right now. Obviously, we get a lot of feedback from our current SROs, and then the additional SROs we'll be adding in our administration, and then with the other changes, we'd be looking to implement potentially from the audit recommendations. Then we can sit down and get the experts around the table to make decisions, and moving forward after the hard way into the school year, if there is a third needed, or if visiting it at the end of each school year to decide, do we still need all five or six at that time?
Okay.
And real quick, too, I think our plan, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief or City Manager Nicholas, we're gonna approach it from the standpoint of we're gonna need three come fall. We have, we're always looking for more officers, because I believe we're at 60 right now. We're looking for a complement of 65. We have some swearing-ins that are gonna happen, but with the additional SROs, if it turned out they went with two, we would be able to absorb the other one just into the regular rank and file through attrition, retirement, all those other things. Go ahead, Alderman Larson.
Okay. And then Chief Bird, I'll address this to you. So currently with our SROs, just like any officers, I would imagine you have a, let's sit down, how are things going? So do you have other metrics, like between you and your SROs, of like, things are good, things are bad? So?
Yeah. So I think, you know, that, yeah, we have those conversations all the time, so, you know, I think most of the time it's quarterly with their commander, and the biggest measure rod for us, of course, is calls of service. We wanna see, and the value, you know, and so the calls of service, the volume, and of course, the type of call. So the immediate, you know, impact would be, of course, fewer calls of service, fewer batteries, so that means fewer fights. So we would use that as a measure rod initially, just to see what our volume is like, and actually, the number of reports that the SROs are writing as well is a good indicator of, you know, the type of calls that we're getting as well. So, but we do talk about this on a regular basis, and this is actually how it came to a head here in this situation, was based off the number of fights that were occurring in the schools and, you know, like I said, if it was, I mean, these were very violent, you know, incidents, you know, with chairs and objects being thrown. So there's a lot to be said about, you know, the actual level of violence being used now. So at the end of the day, that will be my first beginning of the school year. I'm gonna be monitoring, you know, the calls of service and the number of reports being written and the types of reports that are being written. That will be my first measure rod at the beginning of the school year.
Yeah. Alderman Perkins.
So what do we see for milestones between now and the start of the school year? Obviously, hiring some officers would be one, and then subsequent next steps.
If I may.
Sure thing. City Manager.
I'm also gonna add that timing is very important at this juncture. We don't have until August 1st to decide it's gonna be two or three. We don't even have until July 1st to decide it's gonna be two or three because officers that will serve in this capacity as an SRO are gonna be senior officers, and it could be anywhere from three years to six years, could be seven years, it could be four years, that's yet to be determined. So we don't just take them from patrol or investigations, put them in the schools and just say, "Good luck, chief, we'll fill as we can." We're already, as the mayor said, down to 60 from an authorized force of 65 due to retirements and also people deciding on a career change. And we have a hiring process, but as you know, that's done by an independent board. It's a process that involves selecting people from a list that is prefigured, it's also prepared by the board, it might have been prepared six months beforehand. One of the problems with that is, for the people in the audience and for the council's benefit as well, great, we've got some really top candidates on here in the first 10, and then the second 10's still pretty strong, and you go for your first hire and you find there's a one of the first 10 that's available because they got tired of waiting. So it's important to move rapidly on this without being injudicious about quality and the ends that we're all trying to achieve. So I would suggest that in the next 60 days, we have to have this wrapped up with a a bow around it, or we can't do it this school year. It's just not possible physically to get three people in and three people backfilled. And I cannot recommend to the council that we start with three in and not three backfilled.
And Tammy, from your perspective, when do you anticipate the security audit to be finalized and released, and then also, when do you anticipate the student code of conduct to be completed and released?
We're expecting the security audit to be done by the end of May, and then it'll be reviewed by administration prior to submission to the board, and so in the month of June, I would anticipate we'll have that information to the board so that we can start to prioritize where our focus will be before the start of the school year. Code of conduct is being handled primarily by our Student Services Department, and based on input from Kyle Gertis, it sounds like that may not be completed until closer to mid to end of July, and possibly closer even to the start of school. We're trying to get other input from our staff, from our families, and so it's not just a small group that's putting the effort into completing this, it's going to be a larger group.
And there would be an opportunity for council to look at a draft version, as everyone else, all the other special interest groups are looking at the student code of conduct.
Yes.
So then, what I'm hearing from a timeline perspective, we need to decide on going after the SROs ASAP, like Bill said, within the next sixty-eight, sixty days, we have to start executing on that in order to be able to hire, backfill, do all those things, and we may do it without having the student code of conduct in our hands at this point, but our intergovernmental agreement specifies that that must be in place. So, I think some of it's going to be, I'm going to call it taking on faith to a point, but we have, we'll have an agreement that the school district's going to have to live up to, otherwise this agreement would not be, what's the legal term? Effective binding come the fall. Am I correct in that, City Manager? Does that sound right?
Sir, if I could, just to give you a timeline, we do have a police academy starting in May. We have two officers that are assigned up for the May Academy. The next one is in August, and then the dates after that are uncertain. So, we are, I think a lot of times, people have to understand, we are at the whim of the academy, we cannot call and say, "Hey, DeKalb, we need, we need you to start academy for us." They're not going to do that, so we have to kind of meet their guidelines, their timelines and their dates, so.
Even for you, Chief?
Not even for me, so. Well, if I call ISP, maybe, but, but at the end of the day, we're, and we are at the end of our candidate list. I also want you to be aware of that, we have almost exhausted it, so we'll have to start over again.
Alderman, favorite.
You were going to say, I think I heard you say, we're down to sixty from sixty-five, a lot of, right?
Budgeted might be the better term, or recommended, yeah.
Recommended. So, I mean, would it, would it just make sense to move forward with, with three new officers, and if we don't use them in the SRO program, we put them on the street?
Well, just so it's clear, we are moving forward.
Yeah, okay.
We're just not able to hire right now. We have a number of people, as the chief said, we're trying to hire, but we can't drag them in and put a badge on them, right? So, and then, there are some, I think, at this point, because, you know, life happens, and people have other ideas about career, and after we have follow-up conversations with them, they may not seem to be a good fit anymore. So, as the chief said, we're, we've pretty much exhausted our list, we passed over a couple of people here in the last month, and I don't know if there's anybody left on the list that we would, particularly in these times where people, we're looking for a unique candidate, a person with those community values and a compassion and a, and a approachability that are going to be critical in de-escalating and diffusing situations, and not everybody has those qualities. They might be a great shot, but they don't have those qualities, so we're not going to just pick anybody and put them on our list.
And, go ahead.
Fuck it, as, you know, piggyback, City Manager, as well, Alderman, favorite, you're right, we, we are, we have some in the pipeline right now, but to the City Manager's point, what I will not do, if, you know, we have a great continuity right now at the PD, and, you know, I have to be mindful of not trying to stretch a candidate to try to fit what we're doing at DeKalb Police Department. I think it would be an injustice for the police department, it'd definitely be a justice for the city of DeKalb. So we have passed on several candidates, especially on the lateral level. When I say lateral, laterals, if you don't know, are officers who've already been through the academy, they work for another police department, they want to, they put in a interest to come over to the city of DeKalb and be law enforcement officers. Now, I've passed on a couple of laterals, and I just didn't think they were a good fit for us, and some, a lot of red flags, and, you know, I think some of them were deal breakers for me personally, and so I didn't, so we didn't do that. But right now, we do have two, and maybe actually option on a third lateral, and they seem to be a good fit for us, so if all those things would work out, you know, we could be at sixty-five pretty quick, but we still have backgrounds to finish, and, I mean, you know, and like the City Manager said, we're, we're in a recruiting war with every department in the state of Illinois, and even outside of Illinois, and we're all fighting for the same candidates. We were, we're lucky, we, we got a young man who's going to start on May 20th, and the state police were after him, Aurora Police Department were after him, and he, and we did the right thing, and we got him to stay with us, and so, but it's, it's been a fight. So it's just, I guess, I wish it was easier, but we're, I think we could be close to being at sixty-five pretty quick, and like I said, we just got to hope that something doesn't fall apart between now and then.
So, pretty quick does not mean August. That might mean, that might mean December. I don't, I want you to know.
Yes, that's important.
What the facts are, it's very important right now. So, you know, if we don't have a list, it'll take some months to get that list, and then we have to make sure that, you know, we can hire and, and we go through all the state procedures, so, and that they'll be available, maybe they want to, they have to give notice, whatever they're doing in their lives. So, we're aiming for mid-August, that's what we're aiming for, so back up, it's mid-May.
And.
Ninety days.
Before Alderman Smith, just a point of clarification, so let's say, we say we want three SROs, let's just go after that, and the school district's going to make their decision. We get to the point come August, and the school district hasn't completed the code of conduct, variety of other things, and we say, we're not going to put our officers in that environment. High probability, we're going to be able to absorb those three that we're planning on.
Absolute.
Correct, and that's what I, that's what I wanted to make clear.
One hundred percent.
Yeah, that, we're, we're in a no lose situation by going after this.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, all right. Alderman Smith.
Several issues, I want to make sure. Anywhere in here does it address truancy? I don't think that should be SRO's responsibility. I know Detective Lockhart and Detective Jacquez, they were involved in truancy issues. I think that falls on the REO, if I'm not correct.
Yeah, ROE.
ROE.
Yeah, Regional Office of Education.
What about the bus? From personal experiences, what about incidents on the bus? I'd like to see that incorporated back into this agreement to make sure those are addressed.
Yeah.
Maltz and Cortland, you answered my question, those have been isolated. When, Chief, when's the next SRO school?
I'm not sure, we had, we haven't had to really look into it, because, but we are, I'll find out, but a lot of times, I mean, those are, can be, you know, initiated pretty quickly, so I think if we put in a need, if we're going to send two or three officers, I think we should be able to find one.
And how long is that, the SRO school?
I mean, it could be four to six weeks.
Yeah, so another thing we have to prep for.
Correct, and the other thing is, you haven't counted potential retirements, right?
We have not, we, at this point, we have a lot of maybes, so, and we have officers who are not willing to put it on paper, we, you know, a lot of rumors and gossip, of course. I have one officer that I know will be leaving on September 6th, but that is all.
So you and I are hearing the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, which I appreciate it. I'm just concerned, and I don't know about council, that this code of conduct won't be in place, and I will not vote for this without it. I mean, I, I'm going to be very blunt. I've heard from other people in the community, you're going to put three SROs, three officers into the schools, but what about us? And I have to agree with them. Not that there's not an issue in school, that's on the school district, but what about the rest of our citizens? I mean, we're all getting traffic complaints, Chief, you know, you hear from me a lot. Caroline? I mean, I guess I want some assurances from the school district that that code of conduct is in place. I don't want us waiting until August, because you will get abrupt no from me, and you will hear me very vocal about this situation.
Real quick on that, Alderman Smith, though, we know, we know the, the process they're going through, it's, it will be end of July before they have that wrapped up in a nice neat bow. We'll have a chance to look at it, but then also, the contract stipulates it has to be in place. So if it's not in place, then the contract is null and void, I'll use.
Yeah, it's not effective.
Yeah, it's not effective, so, so that, that's our out, let's say.
But we're still leaving our three SROs out there. I've seen all the videos, I mean, I've seen the videos, thirty, what do I have, Chief, thirty-five, thirty-six years? That's ridiculous. That is absolutely ridiculous. So I want assurances for the people that work out there. Otherwise, you'll get a very abrupt no from me, I mean, I, and I will, that's the way it's going to be, and if the school board can come here and, you know, answer questions, Tammy, I think that's what needs to happen. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it, but I don't have kids in there anymore, but if my kids were in there at this point, I'd be knocking on the superintendent's door every single day. So, I'm done off my high horse at the moment, and everybody knows how I feel.
I'm a hundred percent behind you on the student code, student and parent code of conduct that everyone has to sign come day one in the school year. And one thing at the school board meeting, they, they just recently had new elections too, so there's new president, new vice president, new secretary of the school board, and what I heard from the president and vice president was, the solution, like, just like we said, we can't police our way out of the situation that's happening at DeKalb schools. They all believed in a multi-pronged approach, and the student code of conduct was one of the things that was discussed that night. So, I feel like that is a priority on that end, and according to the superintendent talking to her and Tammy, they'll make the deadline of having the student code of conduct in place by that time.
One more, what, how are we handling Cortland and Maltz's schools? Are they, they can't, is the sheriff's office on board, or they don't have anybody assigned as an SRO, correct?
They do not have anybody assigned as SRO to either of those buildings. It's just as, on an as-needed basis, they are called into those buildings to handle issues. There are times that we have Cortland families that live in DeKalb, so when there are times that we're dealing on a family level, then, and they're in the DeKalb city limits, our SROs will participate on that level, but will not participate at a building level and go out to the Cortland or Maltz locations.
Mad, is that something that belongs with an agreement with the sheriff's office to assure jurisdictional boundaries?
I think we make it clear, we, meaning the district and the city, what we are willing to stand by, and if there's more work to do with other agencies, then so be it.
I'm sorry, you're going to hire.
We're limited to, our, the current agreement is limited to the DeKalb city schools. I don't see.
DeKalb corporate limits.
Yeah.
The council's authority, and it's tremendous home role authority, doesn't extend beyond our borders, so we could, we could work out intergovernmental agreements with other agencies, but I would assume that's, that would be in the school's interest to do, as Kish does with the county sheriff's department and others do.
Okay. I mean, of all things, I've taken a lot of calls on this, I mean, I, more than my speeders, I mean, so I'm concerned, and probably because I've been here my.
You hit a good point, I mean, there isn't a, there isn't a week that goes by when I don't have somebody complaining about, where are the police on our streets doing traffic control? And this was going to be the summer of, or the spring and summer of, you know, a presence, not anymore.
Yeah.
And that's not, I'm not going to lie to people, where, until we hit, even when we hit sixty-five, that will include our SROs. So we're still not at sixty-five otherwise, well, actually sixty-two would have been our full strength across all of the various duties that are assigned to our police department. So, there's a lot more work to do, and as Alderman Favor said, we're not going to stop hiring until we get to that point where we can do all these things that people expect of us. So, we're the only police agency rooted in the city of DeKalb, so we take our responsibility very seriously. We have a police force that has extended itself again and again and again. We, and we're looking to make this the most responsive, diverse, and, and effective police force in Illinois. I mean, we're not looking for second best here.
Thank you.
Alderman.
So, if we could review the timeline then, so we're looking at, it sounds like hiring three officers intended possibly for SRO, backfilling all three. We will find out at some point this summer if the school board decides that three is best at this time. Chief, then how would we respond to the school board this summer when they would say, okay, now we would like a third officer as soon as possible? When could that be? I heard December, but I don't know.
So, like I said, right now, we have two starting, they'll start the academy on May 22nd, we have two in line to start in August at their police academy, so that's four, and then, right now, I have two laterals that we can consider, so that would bring us to six. So, if all things being equal, and everything works out okay, and backgrounds are clean, and, you know, I mean, perfect storm, we could be at sixty-six, you know, but like I said, those, those two that start in August, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to be on solo patrol for almost twenty-six weeks from the time they start, because you have fourteen weeks in academy, ten to twelve weeks FTO, then solo patrol. So technically, until they get to solo patrol, they, it really isn't as impactful as you think. Now, it helps because you have two bodies in one squad, there, there are several calls where we don't, you know, if you get a domestic, it's a two-man call for the most part, so you send one car, who's a two-man unit, you got it covered. But until they really are on solo patrol, that's when you really see the impact of the number, because until then, they are, they are being taught, they're being trained the whole time, so, so you just have to look at it in that term. So, if they start in August, we're looking at, you know, the impact won't be really felt until, you know, almost twenty-six weeks after that. So, the ones that are starting in May will, they'll make it, they'll, they'll be pretty impactful at a, you know, of course, at an earlier time, but to me, that's why the laterals are really important, because now you're only talking about most likely a ten-week window, because they already have police experience. Most laterals can be released from the FTO program probably within ten weeks, as long as they're, they're, you know, picking up the DeKalb way, but at the most, twelve weeks. So that's, so that's where you get your quickest impact, is with a lateral, but like I said, Alderman, we, I got to make sure that they fit, I can't take them just to make it happen. I just can't, because I think it'll be doing the disjustice to the police department and the city of DeKalb as a whole, but I do feel really good about the three laterals that are in the portal right now.
Great, and then additionally, do we have any data on recidivism? In other words, we're looking at a number here, eight-hundred-and-twenty-plus of this number, do we know the number of repeat offenders, or, or some kind of percentage? Because I believe, at least for myself and others, that it would be important to know that these would not be separate incidents of separate individual people, or are a number of these, a percentage of these, repeat offenders? What, what is that number, is what I'm looking for, eventually, not tonight.
I'd have to get some information from.
But just as we're working on this agreement.
Sure.
To Alderwoman Larson's point, you know, what, what are those measures that we all want to reach together? And that could be one of them.
And, sir, if I could say that, I think the code of conduct is, is a big part of that repeat offender you're talking about, so I think once we get that nailed in, I think we will see less repeat offenders, because there'll be a hard code, and there'll be accountability there at some point, so.
Thank you.
We can gather that information and have that for you at a future date. I'm sure that the building administration has that, it just wasn't brought forth for this presentation.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So you're looking for some heads nodding to move forward with three SROs?
I'd have to bring this back as an action item.
Okay.
Next meeting, and I've heard, I think what I need to hear. Next meeting. And I, I've heard, I think what I need to hear. But we'll still have to come to terms. We can't wait till August to know if it's a two or three. So you can maybe bring that message back, Tammy. And pick a number and then we'll know that much. But there are other questions that were raised here tonight that bear more attention. And I, I would, I still think, if I'm sitting where you are, it's still a little vague, how many we have and when. So the chief and I are going to work together this week because I start putting together the agenda, the next agenda this weekend. So we've got like three or four days to really nail this down. Take each, each potential new member of the police department and walk them through. Some of them may be certified already, some of them aren't. You know, the, the twenty-six weeks or maybe it's a little bit more, you know, if there's a vacation or something there. That's a lot of time. Four weeks in a month still.
Yeah.
Six months.
Yeah, it's actually short.
Takes us, and that's lickety-split and everything worked out. And you went through the academy with flying colors and you went through your field training with flying colors. It doesn't always happen. So.
That's true.
Thank you, Bill.
Got what you need, Bill?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks, Tammy.
Yeah, thanks, Tammy.
Thanks, Tammy.
By all means, Tammy, don't stay. Go home. Thanks for coming out. I mean, you can stay. I'm not telling you what to do, but. Go enjoy your evening is probably what I was trying to say. Just not very eloquently. All right, moving on to agenda item two, consideration of the aggregate 2021 DeKalb County real estate tax bill on DeKalb taxpayers. Can I have a motion to bring this one to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faber, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor. If I was in finer fettle, I would, I would probably wax on this a little bit, but I'm not. So I'm just going to say, I think the numbers speak pretty loudly. This council has for a number of years now been aiming very aggressively at reducing the city's tax rate and in that way, the city's portion of the aggregate rate. So I portrayed some numbers and also what impacts. People have already seen your tax bill, so they should be seeing some good news. We could see some notes from people saying, wow, what happened there? There is a long way to go. As I'm able, and I'll work with Carrie on this, we'll upgrade. There aren't that many pages that have to be upgraded in our financial plan, which we talked about in, in March. And we'll bring that back with these more accurate tax numbers from other taxing bodies. And then the council can take up, as a policy matter, what you think we ought to be doing in terms of collaborating with other taxing bodies to continue the pace and what are the markers we're going to hopefully aim for.
Yeah, I'm personally looking forward to those conversations. This is a singular moment in our community that all taxing bodies could really step up, do what's right by the taxpayer, and further reduce our tax rate, at least get us down to a competitive tax rate with our surrounding communities. Because it's great to go from, what, eleven-point-five, I'm rounding please, to eleven-point-one. So four-tenth of a percentage point. That isn't bad in a year, but we can keep doing that a few more years and get us down to that nine and a half, nine percent tax rate.
Which is where our competition is.
Exactly. Right. And that's just going to generate more economic development, which is more revenue. Seems like a no-brainer. And looking at what all the tax, our taxing bodies did, I'm assuming they're all sitting around going, this is a no-brainer. So it should be an easy conversation when we talk about continued reduction of the tax rate with every taxing body in the city of DeKalb. I love it.
Just take the button, all right?
Any other comments or questions, council? No? All right.
I was actually going to bring in my.
Alderman Faber.
Yeah, I was going to bring in my tax bill because it had, yeah, it had dropped and I just wanted to, yeah, I think mine was about a hundred and fifty dollars, I think, for the, for the total tax bill. And, and then again, kudos, if you look back, the tax rate last year, 2021, is all the way back to 2013 is where it's equivalent to. So, no, great work.
I think it was the first time ever I was checking the mail, couldn't wait to get my tax bill, just to see. First time ever. All right. Moving on to agenda item K, resolutions. Number one, resolution two-zero-two-two dash zero-four-three approving a nonprofit special event liquor license for the 2022 Corn Fest. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Burbick, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
Approval of this item will free the Corn Fest board to apply for the state-level license and, and, you know, here it is, middle of May, so it's probably not too soon to be aggressively doing that. We recommend its approval.
Council? So if we prove this tonight, Zach Gil, you got to get the streets done by Corn Fest. Ours is the harder part of that too, right?
It's done. Or you'll have a city manager and a city engineer looking for work.
The pitchforks will come out, there's no doubt.
Well, the city, city engineer first. It's how that works. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions, council? All right, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution two-zero-two-two dash zero-four-three passes. All right, moving on to number two, resolution two-zero-two-two dash zero-four-four authorization, authorizing the award of a contract occurring contracting in the amount of four-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-five-hundred-eight dollars and sixteen cents for resurfacing and concrete repairs on Joanne Lane and various other locations, including alternate one, with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed five-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Faber, city manager.
Kudos to Zach Gil, though, in all seriousness, for this project coming in somewhere near our estimates from a while back. We've had some other bad news recently. We'll bring something before you at the next regular meeting where we weren't so lucky. But I can tell you that whether we succeed or fail, Zach's in there pitching, working with other taxing bodies, different levels of, of authority, trying to, to work some magic. In this case, we're talking about phase one of our resurfacing that we do annually. And we've broken it up because, as you well know, for the last couple of years, we've been tearing up a lot of streets to put in water main and so forth. So this first part is to resurface the streets in particularly Joanne Lane and, and the Tilden Park area. We looked at an alternate, just in case we could get lucky, you know, a chance in a million this, this year, and continue resurfacing in Tilden Park Drive, which does need it. But the bids, we had two bids, one from Current Contract, one from William Charles, pretty, pretty competitive bids. And we, we just weren't going to hit that, that lucky draw. So what we've recommended for you here is, in the first phase, I guess you would say, of our streets resurfacing, is to award this, this bid of four-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-five-hundred-eight dollars and sixteen cents to Current Contracting with a authority to approve change orders, which inevitably come with these projects, up to a project price of five-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-three-and-three-thirty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. And I'll add, as I did in the background, that phase two of our 2022 street maintenance will be performed in the Knowles and also on North Thirteenth and North Fourteenth. So we'll be bringing, that's going to bid separately. The Fund Two-Ten, the motor fuel tax fund, is going to pay for the bulk of what I've just described to you tonight. And the other principal capital fund for street maintenance, Fund Four Hundred, will pick up most of the cost of the Knowles and the Thirteenth and Fourteenth Street resurfacing. Recommend your approval.
Council? All right, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution two-zero-two-two dash zero-four-four passes. Hey, council, by the way, do I move on too quick to roll call? Or would you like me to pause longer if anyone's thinking of anything? Or am I doing okay there? All right, all right. Just want to make sure. Feel free to holler at me. We can always pause and pause the roll. All right, moving on to agenda item L, ordinances second reading. We have none. Moving on to agenda item M, ordinance's first reading, ordinance two-zero-two-two dash zero-two-one amending the fiscal year-end December 31st, 2021 budget. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Faber, city manager.
Thank you. At this time of the year, as the, the trial balances are in and all the funds, we're anticipating, the fieldwork's all done, we're anticipating coming before you in another sixty days with a little bit less than that, the audit for the 2021 city budget. We'd like to tidy things up. We have enough information now to go ahead and clean up any overages that may have resulted in the previous fiscal year. As you may remember, I don't know why you would, but I'll just say, we had thirty-two funds in the budget in 2021. Nine of them are impacted here. And of those nine, only three really have any net impact on the actual fund balance. And I, I want to applaud and thank Carrie Dittman for hanging in here. She, she has made this audit go very well and seemingly painstakingly, but I know otherwise. You know, we went through over the period of the last three to four years, a number of finance directors, assistant finance directors, assistant city managers and so forth. Everybody had their hand in the cookie jar trying to make things work with the best intentions. But we've got a solid pro now who also has the audit experience to know when we should be making some changes that we maybe hadn't done in the past. So I'm not going to go into the deep weeds here, you know, because I will not have the voice for it. If you really wanted to do that, Carrie is primed and ready. But I will just say this to set it up. So the general fund is the, the largest fund involved in any of these changes. I'm pleased to say that revenues in the general fund exceeded expenditures in 2021 by approximately four-point-eight million dollars. Ring the bell, right? Nevertheless, to meet audit standards and protocols, when a line item, a spending line item or a revenue line, but in this case, they're all spending line items, when one of those spending line items exceeds the budgeted amount, there has to be some adjustment made. We have to bring it back into balance. And there were three ways in which that happened across the general fund, and there was a common underlying impact, and that was COVID. So in 2021, seems like forever ago, but from the beginning of 2021 until almost mid-year, there weren't a lot of people who were vaccinated, let alone boosters, and their boosters weren't even available. So we had a lot of extra calls. A lot of our fire and police in particular were exposed and suffered the consequences. So there was a lot of overtime that was related to these additional calls and then the health impacts on our workforce. So that, that really speaks to the majority of the dollars that were overspent or spent beyond the budget. Again, underlined, came out more than solvent because of other things that we did. The council very much involved in that in 2021, doing the, remember how we lifted some of our debt and put it forward and did things like that, when there were budget cuts and all the rest. So item three, in particular, item one and two, no net impact to the general fund, unless you want to really get in, and roll up your sleeves on that. I, I think we go to item number three. That's what I've just been describing to you. The, the impact on the spending side was six-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars. But again, there was a, a large offset in terms of revenue to the general fund. Item four, a relatively small fund, the RSSA that was created for Heritage Ridge, there was an impact, an increase in expenditures, two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Why? Different contractor involved by the end of the year. And there were, there were certain types of work that we thought were not adequate. And so we had to pull out some bushes and do some new things. So I, I can't get any further into detail. I don't think Andy's here tonight. So that's the best I can do. Item number five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, no net impact on the funds. The last one, foreign fire insurance tax fund, we met, the chief and Carrie and I met with the, the fund today, as you know. This is a, a great benefit to the fire department, sit up in state statute. There's this, there's a state allocation every year of a certain amount of money to the local foreign fire insurance tax funds. And the, the only latitude the city has is, because it's part of the city's budget, we need it to stay, again, in balance. In this case, although there was some additional revenue, there were also expenditures beyond the allocated expenditures in the budget. The balance was a net overage on the spending side. There is sufficient fund, there are sufficient funds in the balance. We talked to the board about it this morning. And action has been taken to do the offset on their part. And we'll, with your blessing, do the same when it comes to fixing up our budget.
Nice job dotting all the i's, crossing all the t's, getting everything in line. I'm pretty OCD about my financials at work and I love where every penny is allocated in the right bucket. So wonderful job. Thanks for the hard work. With that, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance two-zero-two-two dash zero-two-one passes on first reading.
Motion to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
Motion to waive second reading by Alderman Burbick, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Thank you.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two-zero-two-two dash zero-two-one.
Mayor, I might just say.
Yes.
Now, going to another fiscal year, our current fiscal year, we'd like to make a few changes, particularly on the capital side, to deal with some of these different prices that we're getting and also to, which, which includes the downtown. And so a change, among other things, in our TIF three capital side and Fund Two-Ten to clean up. We'll bring those to you at the next regular meeting.
All right. And again, Finance Director Dittman, thank you on this. All right, so moving on to agenda item N, reports and communications. Council, anyone want to start? Alderman Faber?
So I had, I had missed the last meeting, but prior to the last meeting, I had a ward meeting that was well-attended. I had about, I guess, a dozen different residences. We talked about parking, just property maintenance, speeding. Speeding was one that came up as well. I wanted to thank Andy and Dawn and the city staff and public works just for the, the great work. You know, they came through our neighborhood, I think last week, and they were just cleaning up all the trees in the parkway. And there was a, a tree that was actually in a, in the owner's property. It was leaning over the sidewalk, made the sidewalk very impassable. And so Dawn got involved and, you know, within a week, went by and the tree was cleaned up. So I would say if you have, if there's lawn issues, right, if it's the parkway, that's the, that's the, you can call the city. And if it's the, if it's on the property on the, on the other side of the sidewalk, on the house side of the sidewalk, that's going to be more property maintenance. So, but give your alderman a call and we can get, I think it's chapter thirty-one is the correct city ordinance to, to review the process there for that. But no, I really want to thank the city staff for the great work they do. Thank you.
Alderman Adams?
No report.
Alderman Smith?
Zach, thank you for North Thirteenth Street. The project's been going very well and patience to the residents up there. I know it's, looks like an obstacle course and a few other things to get through, but they've been very patient and I, I think we're on schedule with that. I saw them working Saturday. So thank you for that. That's it.
Alderwoman Morris?
Sure. I just want to note that we had a little ceremony out in front of the prop- Sure, I just want to note that we had a little ceremony out in front of the property that we're going to demolish tomorrow.
Under Hillcrest.
Under Hillcrest, on Hillcrest. And it was just really nice to see that come to fruition, to see it come full circle after having worked so long with the council toward progress in that neighborhood. So it's really exciting. And that's all.
Alderwoman Larson?
I just happened to be driving through Tilton Park yesterday, and just how far along Joanne is coming, and into the people's yards. You could see it's been repaired, it's been seeded, the grass is already growing, I mean, just perfect timing. And then also, I am the representative to the CEC, the Environmental Commission, and they're going to be working with the Park District this year during their movie nights about having some different things about monarch butterflies and different programs that they'll be supporting, so reaching out on that.
Alderman Perkins?
I'm planning a award meeting on May 25th, Wednesday, May 25th, at 6:00, at the Pavilion on Fairview, so if anyone has any thoughts or ideas to talk about, I would love to hear about them.
Awesome. Alderman Verbick?
NIU commencements are this weekend, followed by about two dozen area high school graduation ceremonies held at Conification Center. Congratulations to all graduates.
Awesome. And following Alderwoman Morris, yeah, the event at Hunter Hillcrest was pretty cool. Great gathering, great event. Sledgehammers were abound, and it was pretty cool to have that opportunity, just to bring a visual representation to the lack of tolerance we have for inappropriate behavior in a resident and a business or landlord in our community. So thanks for everyone that came out tonight, thanks for counsel, over the last year, the support on that project, and then thank you for the years before that, that got us to the point where we could initiate that from happening. So you guys have been working hard at this for years, well beyond my time here, so I just want to thank you for that. That's going to be a great impact on our community. With that, city manager, do you have anything?
Along those lines, congratulations to the mayor and council for today's event and special meeting. Special thanks to our counselor, Matt Rose, also to the police department and the building code department in particular, who for several years have been dogged in their insistence of just what you described, Mayor, the intolerance of people who are not going to do the right thing, when they have the means and the knowledge to do so. And I think it finally proved out today. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, and I intend that as soon as, well, really can happen anytime, as the dust is flying over there, Hillcrest and Blackhawk, we'll have to start thinking about that community polling, so we can get finally our arms around all the, everybody's pet use, and then we have to get it down to some type of a workable size that a development interest would say, that makes sense. That one may not make any money, that one may not make any money, but I think in the hole, we can be sustainable at this location for so many square feet of X. And there'll be lots of conversation here about that in the months ahead. It's important that we go through that, and once everybody's been heard, then the council will decide which direction we go.
Awesome. All right, moving on to agenda item O, the executive session. We are going to skip the executive session in order to discuss the sale or lease of real property as provided for in five ILCS 120/2C6. We are going to skip that executive session, which moves us on to agenda item P, adjournment. Can, oh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May same sign? We are adjourned.
Skip it, we're skipping it.